Welcome to the August 6, 2024, continued City Council Meeting of July 23, 2024. And I'm also opening up the special August 6, 2024 City Council Meeting. I would like to call both meetings to order at 6:02 PM. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Snyder?
Present.
Councilmember Pappen?
Here.
Councilmember Cahalan is excused. Vice Mayor Goodman?
Here.
Mayor Fung?
Here.
Four members of City Council are present.
Thank you so much. And for those who are able, please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. So the first item for the evening is the continued item number 19 from the July 23, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. And that is to discuss and consider ordering the submission of a measure on Article 34 of California Constitution for the November 5, 2024, general municipal elections and setting priorities for filing. City Manager, would you give us a sort of a rundown on some of the events that's recently happening and then so that we can proceed accordingly?
Yes, certainly, Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the City Council. Before we get started, if I may, I would like to introduce our new legal counsel from the firm RWG, Mr. David Lim. David is a graduate from UCLA and went to law school at Hastings, which is now University of California at San Francisco Law School. So David has almost over 25 years of experience as a litigator, municipal attorney. He will be now our new city attorney, along with an array of experienced lawyers in the firm RWG. So I'd like to welcome Mr. Lim to the team. And it'll be a pleasure to work with him as we continue to make Millbrae a great place.
Absolutely. David, welcome aboard. You want to say a couple of words?
I'm just happy to be here. Thank you to the council for having trust in hiring me. Looking forward to working with you to do everything that you want to do to help the community. So thanks.
All right. Thank you so very, very much. And then update on item number 19.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. So the continued item from the July 23 meeting, item number 19. So as you may recall, County Manager Mike Caligie had requested that the Board of Supervisors consider placing a countywide measure on the November 5 ballot. This was seeking, in essence, generic voter approval for the county or any other governmental agency, as the language stated, to act as a developer to acquire land and construct affordable or low-income public housing pursuant to Article 34. Now, the language included unincorporated and incorporated areas. So at the meeting where this was introduced, which was July 22, the Board of Supervisors continued the item to today, August 6. They did not meet today, but during that time, they continued the meeting to tomorrow, August 7, at 1:00 PM. In reviewing the staff report that came out today, it appears that the county is changing course. The item for tomorrow, and I'll read it into the record, it's item number one, and the only item on the agenda, is to receive a report from county staff about the work and consultation that the Board of Supervisors directed regarding the proposal placed on the ballot at the November 5, 2024 General Presidential Election, an Article 34 ballot measure, and provide directions regarding any future steps. So there's no action, there's no resolution. In reaching out to the county, our understanding is that this is an information item and that it appears that the Board of Supervisors will not take action and pursue a ballot measure. So in light of that, and the fact that this language included incorporated areas, which are municipalities, we had proposed this item at the last meeting, continue this evening, to have our own Article 34 language on the ballot for the city of Millbrae and our incorporated area. So in light of this information that came out today, I'm recommending that the City Council consider continuing this item to tomorrow evening, so we find out and we can see what the Board of Supervisors will actually do tomorrow. If the board does not place this item on the ballot, we can simply just counsel tomorrow night's meeting.
Okay. I think that's a good recommendation. Shall we say tomorrow evening at 6, just to be a time and a place certain?
Yeah, that's fine with staff.
Okay. All right. What about my colleagues? Anyone? Just a minute, okay. Mr. Vice Mayor, you have anything? Okay.
Do you want me to go so we're not wasting time?
Yeah, just if you have a comment, I'd like to have it.
I have a slew of comments, having spent the day waiting for the county's staff report to find out that there is no staff report on there. And having been at the meeting before where the supervisors definitely asked for changes in language, it kind of leaves us up in the air. So I support continuing this. I do want to hear public comment. I'm going to express a couple of concerns. From having been a new council member and very trusting, I am no longer trusting. And when I was mayor last year and all of this started kicking off, the city manager, myself, and Supervisor Pine had a meeting. And at that meeting, Supervisor Pine said he understood everything that we said. And then he said he would not allow, he would not put this agenda item on the September 12, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting, and yet it went on to the Board of Supervisors meeting. So I read the staff report, I talked to Supervisor Pine's staff member earlier today, although I didn't talk specifically about action versus non-action, I simply do not trust the county of San Mateo, and I certainly do not trust the county executive on this. So I, hopefully, we've got enough time. I have Airport Roundtable, which of course I will go late to tomorrow, but, and that starts at 7 o'clock at the Chakuti Room. But I think we need to have a backup plan, and that's with the county. I have equal concern that, what is it called? Regional Measure 4, which is the $20 billion housing bond, has language in there that pertains to Article 34. And this brings us back to that same question. If the city has a measure and the county at the same election, or the city has a measure and the region has a measure, and they both pass, which one has precedent on that? So tomorrow, if we do continue this, I'd like to have clarification on who has precedent. If I do not like the idea that everybody in San Mateo County is voting to say what Millbrae, what the county can do overriding a local government, a city, town, I'm equally as concerned having the region say, "The residents of Millbrae will pay for this," and that same money can be used to come back and buy a hotel and hurt us financially. So those are my cards on the table. I am all about Millbrae's financial longevity, our ability not to get into structural deficit, and to make sure that we have a revenue stream that can do that. And I am now firmly of the opinion that any hotel conversion, unless that hotel has been out of business for years and sitting around doing nothing, should not be touched by the state or the county.
Legal, do you want to just kind of comment a little bit on, you know, the research? We don't want to go into the details of it, but I think we have touched on that a little topic and have some preliminary expectations and findings?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Councilmember Schneider, to answer your question about which ballot measure would control city or county, last week, Mr. Williams and the mayor asked our firm to do an analysis on that very question. One of my colleagues, Julia Shakuri, prepared a memo, which I emailed to all of you today. It's about three pages. If you've had a chance to read it, I can, of course, because it's not agendized tonight, I would say if you read it and have questions, any council member can give me a call, and I'd be happy to chat with them. Or if you want to talk about it collectively as a group, I would recommend a closed session because it does have some legal ramifications of things that the city might want to do, you know, based on if that fact pattern were to come to pass. But the memo should be in your email. If you don't have it, please let me know. And then once you review it, or if you've already reviewed it and want to talk to me individually, we can do that or set up a closed session.
My concern again is now not so much what the county might do, although that concern is still there, is what a regional measure for may also say. So now it's a broader, a broader thing to talk about. And if we need to do, I'm going to be at the Board of Supervisors meeting at 1:00 tomorrow. And if I need to get back here for that meeting, I'm available earlier than September.
Okay. Yep, okay. So I think, just like City Attorney Lim has said, there is a privileged memorandum being sent out to all the council members. Go and take a look at it. And if we need to go into detail, we can do so tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Councilmember Pappen, do you have anything?
I will be available at that time. I do think my colleague is referring...
Mike? Is that on?
It's on.
Okay.
Not close enough. Sorry about that. I do think my colleague is referring to the Bafa bond, and I'll try to get clarifying language as to the Article 34 impact of that, or future reference here. Thanks.
All right. So if no further comment, I think I'd like to make a motion to continue this item until tomorrow, when, where, there's, okay, all right. We'll take some public comment. City Clerk, would you please?
The first speaker is Joe Terese. Please accept on mute.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wanted to speak during public comment. Is that going to be on the agenda this evening?
For tonight, it's a special meeting, so we don't have public communication, but it's a desire of council, is that correct?
That is correct. All right. I guess we could accommodate some of that. Let's finish item number 19, and then we can accommodate those who want to speak on public comment later. Just hang on to that, Joe. What about the next one?
Patricia Lam, I just want to double-check that you want to speak on item, the continued item.
I want to speak about what the county is trying to put on the measure. Can I speak now?
That is the item.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Councils. I disagree with what the county of San Mateo, Board of Supervisors, and County Executive Michael Caligie are proposing for the November 2024 ballot. They're asking us to authorize public agencies in San Mateo County to annually develop, construct, or acquire low-income housing units up to 1% of the total housing units existing in San Mateo County. They're asking us, the San Mateo County voters, to give a blank check to the county, and public agencies like SFO, SFPUC, San Mateo Union High, the Heart Housing Endowment, and Regional Trust of San Mateo County to acquire any land, real estate, lots, and convert it to low-income housing. This is a power grab. I believe the Millbrae local voters know their city best, and any future housing projects will have an effect on our city's revenue, general funds, infrastructures, police, fire, water, sewer, and school services. We urge you to do what it takes to protect us, the city of Millbrae, whether we want to put our own measure onto the November 2024 election, or to be excluded from the county measure or the regional measure for a $20 billion bond. We, the local residents of the city, should have the final say to what housing is developed in our city. We demand our voters' right. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Karen. And Karen, if you could please, give me a quick second. There you go. We just want to double-check you are wanting to speak on the item number 19?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity. The San Mateo County Board of Supervisors have proven that they can't be trusted to have a fair, balanced approach towards all cities. When they approved the La Quinta Purchase, they knew the financial hardship they would place Millbrae in. Millbrae must have our own protections. We need to be in a position where we are not subjected to harm. I urge you to do what it takes to protect Millbrae. Thank you for this opportunity.
And there's no other speaker on this item now.
Okay. All right. So we're just going to leave public comment on this item open until, because we're continuing this, we're considering to continue this item until tomorrow evening. So I think I'll make a motion to continue this item until tomorrow at 6:00 PM.
Second.
We have a second? Any further comments? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fung?
Aye.
Continue item number 19 is continued to August 7 at 6:00 PM. Pass a vote of 4-0.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to qualify. So if the county does not place this item tomorrow on the ballot, then tomorrow evening's continuation will be canceled. The meeting will just simply be canceled.
I would think so. I would think that...
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Just want to clarify with my colleagues, if the county does not take an action tomorrow, are my colleague okay to also take no action on that item, therefore no need to have a meeting?
Personally, it's at the will of the majority of the council. I believe we should have a measure on the ballot in November. Again, my trust level is zero, but, you know, if it plays out that way, we simply have run out the clock. And then the question is, what happens next? And we're going to have a completely changed city council, trying to, we've got, we, the five of us, have the knowledge of what's happened in the last year and a half, and that will be lost when there's four brand-new council members. So that's my reason for not, I'd rather get it done now while we're all here, but it's fine. I understand.
I got your comment. Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have anything?
No, I'm fine.
So you're okay if the county take no action tomorrow, that it's okay to not take an action tomorrow and therefore not need for a meeting?
It's a pleasure of the council, yeah.
So I'm asking for my third vote here?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I think the direction to staff here, Mr. City Manager? I think the direction to staff here is that if the county does not take an action tomorrow and putting this on the ballot, I see no need for us to discuss it as we are, I think we've got three votes here, to not take an action should the county chose not to take an action.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Thank you. It's not on the agenda here, although since we have a particular speaker who would like to come, you know, make a public communication, allow a public communication. And for those who are interested in speaking under the public communication for item not on tonight's agenda, you need to raise your hand on Zoom and submit your speaker slip quickly. Again, and this is for item not on tonight's agenda, and up to three minutes. City Clerk, would you like to, we'll wait for you, that's okay. You can take your time and go ahead, take the podium, and then we'll call on your name. Could you just call her name?
Mr. Donald Davy.
Hello. I've come here tonight to ask for your help. I've been a resident of Millbrae for 40 years. Presently, I'm staying on Hemlock in a rear cottage. My entrance is the alleyway behind MQ Health Foods, and there's been no parking posted there for as far back as I can remember, and it has not been enforced. Recently, that's all changed. I've talked to quite a few police officers who feel for me and told me they directed me here tonight. Well, not tonight, but they told me to talk to city council and ask for your help. I've recently been, became handicapped, I've learned all kinds of things that I'm dealing with. But my issue tonight is for parking, and because the alley is now being enforced, I feel that on Hillcrest is my place that I could park, and I can walk four houses to my front gate. When Hillcrest is overrun with patrons from the Taivu slash Golden Dragon, I'm not sure what it is now, they take up Hillcrest, and the tickets don't seem to faze them. And it leaves me with nowhere to park, except where it's posted, "No parking" in the alley. And the police have told me in the past that, you know, before the explorers get here and the people that enforce the ticketing and the parking, you're okay. So at nighttime, that's where I've been parking, and everything was great. Recently, that's all changed. I know the enforcers in the daytime, too, and they've told me the same thing, to come here and ask for your help. I'm not sure what the solution is, but I know that parking at Safeway, between Safeway and the Chevron Station, which is one of the few places that doesn't have a restricted parking, there's three or four spots there, is a little too far for me to get my, but, home. The, I'm not sure where we could go from this. The people that park on Hillcrest, I've called the police at night, and I feel bad, and I apologize when they show up. When they show up, knowing that it's a parking situation, and they're busy doing other things, they're taking care of, you know, serious, you know, what's going on in the city. And I hate to bother them with parking, it's more of the, for the explorers who work in the daytime. And the restaurant patrons realize this, and about 5, 6 o'clock, they, they fill up Hillcrest. That leaves me with nothing.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, we will, I'll work within, Jim, and we'll take a look at that and see, see what we can do.
We'll get you assistance that you need. Okay. Elaine, go ahead, call the online speaker.
The next speaker is Joe Terese.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it very much. I just wanted to say a few things about the recall, you know, in light of the apparent results of the recall vote, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank councilmembers Cahalan and Goodman for their service to the community. I know it takes a lot of personal sacrifice and commitment to run for council and to be a member of the council, and I just want to know that, in spite of the results of the recall election, that they are in fact appreciated by many members of the community, and I'd like to thank them for their service. I'd also like to just, in general, express my disappointment with the results. I understand that recall is a tool that's available and can be used, and, you know, it's totally legal and everything, but I really do feel like this was a abuse of the recall process that's going to place a damper on the willingness of others to step forward as councilmembers Cahalan and Goodman did to serve on the city council, knowing that they can be recalled simply by exercising their personal judgment and conscience to formulate a policy position that others don't agree with. And lastly, I hesitate to say this, but I just think I need to say it. I would like to also express my disappointment in the other three city council members who chose not to offer any encouragement or support for their colleagues during this recall process. And this is in stark contrast to many other elected officials throughout the county who spoke out actively against the recall and against the unfairness of the recall process, recognizing it as an unfair and unjust use of that recall process. The three council members had a clear choice to make. They could either step up and speak out in support of their colleagues, or choose the more politically expedient route of doing nothing. I'm disappointed again that they decided to do nothing, and I hope that in doing so, that they have not inadvertently contributed to irreparable damage to the effectiveness and functionality of future city councils by making everyone afraid to speak their mind and vote according to their conscience. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alice King. Alice?
Hello. Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So thank you very much for Mayor Anderson, Gina Pappen, former mayor, and also former mayor for Ann Stiders. In all those past months, I think they're using their political career to protect Millbrae, fans from my heart and all, as I know my neighborhood. At this time, I strongly commend, no matter what the county decision for the Article 34, I would recommend our city still need to have something to protect for our future. Because the five people for the supervisor, they're controlling San Mateo County, the whole population, for our personal right. They don't have a good enough experience, they don't have any listening to the public, what they're thinking about to destroy the Article 34. That is the law. Is San Mateo going to do? Is San Mateo going to lose the law in order? No. We've been here a long time. We have a right to protect our community. And in the future, when anyone tries to choosing our council, please open the eye to see if they have the same standard as a basic community's right. Then we're choosing who's going to sit in the seats. Otherwise, if they are not doing the things to protect our community, they should be out. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all the speaker for public communication.
Thank you so much. Closing public communication for this evening. Moving on to consent calendar, we've got four items. Item number one, adoption of a resolution authorizing an increase in the budget, project budget for the nearshore outfall restoration project in the amount of $20,000 for a total project budget of $1,5,057 and authorizing the city manager or destiny to execute contract change orders with Disney Construction up to the total project budget. Item number two, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or destiny to execute a professional services agreement with GHD Incorporated for the SFO pump station rehabilitation design project and authorizing the city manager to execute all change orders up to the design project contingency of $24,002 for a total design project amount not to exceed $184,017. Number three, approved by motion, a request from the Millbrae Chamber of Commerce for parking lot and street closure for fee waivers for the Art and Wine Festival on August 31st to September 1st, 2024. Approved by motion, a request from the Millbrae Chamber of Commerce for street closure and fee waivers for the holiday tree lighting on December 7, 2024. Does anybody want to pull any items? Councilmember Pappen?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to pull item three for clarification.
Okay, item number three is pulled. Anyone else? Okay, so can we have motion to approve one, two, and four?
So moved. Second.
City Clerk?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye.
Consent calendar items one, two, and four passed by a vote of four to zero.
Okay, item number three. Councilmember Pappen?
Yes, so it says, approved by motion, a request from the Chamber of Commerce for, basically, the Art and Wine Festival here. Just for clarification and for the public, the Chamber of Commerce has a new Board of Directors who are now running, also a president, vice president, treasurer, and secretary, who are presently running the board, the Chamber of Commerce. So for clarification, this motion would relate directly to that new board and the executives therein. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the Millbrae Chamber of Commerce, which is the members that came together to adopt a new board, new board membership and new executive board are seeking this request. That is correct.
Okay, then I move approval with that clarification.
Second.
Okay, any further comments? Councilmember Schneider?
So the new board will work with the existing structure? Just so I have clarification?
So I think the item before us is to approve or disapprove the fee waiver... Oh, not fee waivers, it's just a request. Oh, it is a fee waiver.
No, it's fee waivers and street closure.
But we're not here to discuss the inner, you know, operations of the chamber itself. I think that's the inner operation of the chamber itself is up to the board president, their executive board, and their own board of directors to work with their members and their executive directors.
I understand that, Mayor. I understand that. However, there have been three meetings, of which council members have attended with people who have now become the new board. There is still an existing board. There is still an existing chamber bookkeeper, chief financial officer, treasurer. There is still their tax attorney. And I have the names of all of them. There is still the payroll company on that. And given that two council members have been meeting and leading part of this effort, I want the Art and Wine Festival to go on. And I want it to be a happy time. And it's a part of many of us in the community. But I don't quite understand everything that's been happening because I have not been able to be in the room.
So, if I may, so I think we should first focus on this item. And then if it's so choose, it's the pleasure of this council, we can bring the new board and the new president to the council in a future meeting to introduce them to the community and have them make presentations with their future plan. I think instead of, you know, certain council member representing what the new...
But certain council members have been representing.
Well, so...
Without coming to the city council for direction.
So I would say that's incorrect. We're putting in place a procedure at which the council can be productive and have a new board because it's needed. But in terms of the inner operations of this new board and how it will continue to operate and their bylaws, I think it is probably best that we invite the executive board to come in for presentations and meet the community so that all the questions can be answered. I think that instead of us representing the Chamber of Commerce, which I'm not on the board, I think it's best to have the president to do so.
Do the mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to clearly state that the Chamber of Commerce is a separate entity. It is not the city council. The city council is a member of the chamber, as are many other business operations here. And the goal of any meetings have been to seek complete and utter transparency. And that's what the members have asked for now for a very long time. I believe that's what the new board is trying to do. They operate independent of the city council. And yes, we all want the Art and Wine Festival to continue. And it is the commitment of those, the liaison, the mayor, and I think this entire council to work with the Chamber of Commerce as it presently operates to make that happen. So again, everything that has progressed here has been for complete and utter transparency and accountability. And I do believe that is the goal of the new board as they have presented to us. And we wish them all the very best. We look forward to working with them moving forward here. But again, I'll have to remind my colleague, the chamber is not part of the city operations. We look, we've tried and we'll continue to try to work with the board and all the members presently because the business operations of each and every business in our city is very important to our sustainability and really keeping the city moving forward here. So that said, do we vote on this yet?
Not yet.
Okay, I think we have a motion in a second. So I'd call for the vote, please.
We'll get there in a second. Did you still want to make a comment for the vice mayor? Okay, so you're done. All right, any further comments?
Again, I still do not understand. The councilwoman has said with the board and as it is, but that adds wiggle room. Does this mean with the existing, the previous chamber or only with the board? I don't understand.
So, okay, perhaps let me try to clarify. We're approving by motion a request from the Millbrae Chamber of Commerce, represented by the board of directors and the new president. That's the premise of this discussion.
But there are two chamber boards at present.
Let me, can I clarify? May I clarify?
All right, go ahead.
For the council member. There is one board of directors. It was elected by the membership of the businesses within the city of Millbrae. That is the only valid board that exists. And those individuals were sworn in to office. They are currently controlling or operating as the Chamber of Commerce. So any suggestion of a prior board was not validly put into place. An individual cannot appoint their own board of directors when there is no board of directors. That then falls to the membership to elect a board. And that is what happened here. The businesses within the city of Millbrae elected their own board. And they are proceeding with their executive staff and their board of directors.
City Clerk, for the minutes.
So, hold on, hold on. Pardon of order. Mr. Vice Mayor, go ahead. I need to give you an opportunity here.
So I was going to make a comment. I thought it already had been settled. But typically, if there's a board and if you have a new board that comes in and it's the same entity, they assume the role of the official board. Is that correct?
Correct. That's my understanding.
And so when we received this request, it came from the board of the organization. And if there's one organization, it would be the same board that was installed at the latest meeting, correct?
Correct.
And so that's who's presenting to us in order to have this waiver and have the Art and Wine Festival continue.
It's my understanding there's only one board at the present time. And that's the board that is operating the Chamber of Commerce.
All right, thank you.
And that's the board that we're working with.
Right, okay.
Clear?
For the minutes.
Final comments?
I have been a paid chamber member since 2014. I was a paid member now. My check was cashed several months ago. I was not allowed to attend that meeting. So just put that on the record, please, in the written record of the minutes tonight. You can do whatever you want to do, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, for the organization and for the record, the reason for that would be a Brown Act violation because three council members would have been in attendance. I don't know exactly how that would relate to chamber. But as three elected officials, that would take precedence. And there would have been a Brown Act violation. Councilmember Pappen is the designated voted liaison to represent the city council. And then obviously you as the mayor, since this city is a member of the chamber. So just for clarification, the Brown Act is the Brown Act. And as elected, that's what prevails.
And I understand. And yet it took away my right as a paid member of the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Can we have a roll call, please? Unless there's public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised and I did not receive any speaker slip.
Closing public comment on item number three. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes, under duress.
Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
Mayor Feng?
Yes, and thankful that the chamber now finally is able to get this Art and Wine Festival done. It's a wonderful celebration for Millbrae. It's a tradition that we've been looking forward to for many, many years.
Item number three passed by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. Item number five, new business. Discuss and direction on the city's position on the Article 34 of the California Constitution measure proposed by the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for the November 5th, 2024 general election. And I believe we're here to discuss a, perhaps a resolution. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. And this is a separate item, but a companion item to the previous item that the city council continued to tomorrow night. And as a result of the Board of Supervisors meeting to discuss placing a ballot measure on Article 34, we had received, the city managers had received from the county manager a letter on July 25th seeking input from municipalities on the proposed ballot measure. There was a deadline of August 1st that the county manager was seeking that input. So I had sent a letter dated July 31st, which is in the council packet, just stating that the city's position, based on information that was provided at the July 26 city council meeting and then in anticipation of tonight's meeting that we placed on this agenda for your consideration. Now, is a resolution and position statement of the city of Millbrae that's in your packet as well. So I can go into detail, answer any questions you have. I think everyone is versed on what Article 34 is and what it isn't. It's simply, just to restate it, Article 34 simply states if a governmental agency is acting as a developer to develop or acquire land, that project must go to the voters within the entity that the project is being proposed. That's it. So the Board of Supervisors was seeking input. Our concern, to summarize, is simply the language that includes incorporated cities. It's very generic. We had stated our issues and objections as well as a meeting of city managers. And I believe city of Half Moon Bay, city of South San Francisco, city of Redwood City, city of Belmont, city of Daly City. There might be one or two others. All those letters are in your packet. And we all agree that this is too fast. There's a lot of unanswered questions that need to be vetted, such as local control, fiscal impact. Mr. Callagie, the county manager, had stated that he's kind of modeling this proposed ballot measure from the county of Sacramento. The difference is the county of Sacramento sought resolutions from each of those municipalities agreeing to have the item be placed on the agenda. That step did not happen here. And it's just too much, too fast with a lot of questions. So with that, we are proposing that the city council consider adoption of a resolution. That if you do adopt it, we would forward that to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow morning in preparation of their meeting that commences at 1:00 to state the position of the city council in the city of Millbrae.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, City Manager. Any questions from the council for the staff on the resolution that's in front of us? Councilmember Pappen?
So it would be more than the letter that went out on July 31st?
The letter already went out.
Yes, I know that. I'm saying it would be more than the letter that... Or is this going to just mirror the letter?
I think the resolution and the agenda packet speak a lot more than just the letter. There are a lot of contents and whereas in there. And stated our position. And also have a, one of the last few sentences is kind of an opt-out. And I'm just going to read it for the purpose of the discussion. It's be it further resolved. If the Board of Supervisors seeks to otherwise approve the ballot measure, the city of Millbrae specifically opts out and requests the Board of Supervisors to exclude the city of Millbrae from its ballot measure. So it carries a lot more substantial meaning in our resolve in terms of self-governance.
Thank you for that clarification. Sorry I missed it.
Any further questions for the staff? Go ahead, Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank you to City Manager Williams. I know he doesn't want to take credit for this. But it has been a crazy week and a half when we're supposed to be on recess. And Tom called together the city managers around the county. And I thank the city managers from around the county for paying attention and having that meeting. I don't know what happened at the meeting, but I have seen the 79 pages of letters turned into the Board of Supervisors. So I just want to acknowledge staff for taking a very strong leadership role in a way that brought many cities together on this. And I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, comments for staff? Before I open up for public comment, because we have a few speaker slip here.
I just forgot. I don't know if there's other staff that helped the city manager with this. Thank you to all of staff for this.
Okay, all right. If there's no more comment from, or questions from the council at this point, I'd like to call public comment on this item. First one is Steve Rinaldi.
Thank you, Mayor Feng, city council, and Millbrae residents. I'd like to strongly support that the council do send their feedback about the measure to San Mateo County and our strong disapproval of it. Other counties, other cities around the county had expressed similar concerns of overdevelopment, not equitable distribution. If this blanket Article 34 measure were to appear, voters' rights being stripped and essentially saying that it's a blank check for county executive Callagie to do as he pleases. And I would like to also strongly recommend that our city council and our city staff put a measure on the ballot so the residents of Millbrae can vote regarding Article 34 and our approval or disapproval of these projects as they come in. I find it important to do it sooner than later. People's minds are fresh right now with the injustice of La Quinta and what's going on. And I fear that if we delay this or postpone it to a later date, to when the county may be putting it on a ballot, that people may forget, or not necessarily forget, but not be as engaged. So I'd strongly recommend doing this as soon as possible so we have insurance to protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Ken Smith.
Very much for having me up here. I appreciate all the hard work you're doing. I know that the county didn't give a... I know that the um, the county didn't give us very much time. They notified the city managers at like ten o'clock on Friday, and then the media like at four fifty-eight for a Monday meeting. So the team here in Millbrae, we're all so very proud of you for all the hard work that you do. Rinaldi said it all, and I'm just going to uh say, yes, we want you to pursue the resolution ASAP so that we protect Millbrae. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Next speaker is Stella Lau.
Good evening, city councils.
Can you pull the mic down?
Just trying to get closer to mine.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council. I'm here to address an important issue that affect all of us in Millbrae, our voting rights and our voices. San Mateo County should not decide where housing project would be built in Millbrae without asking us, the residents. We know our city best, and we should have the final say. There is a measure that would give county executive Caligie the power to approve any project without our input. It would take away our right and set a dangerous example, making us more frustrated with the government. They are asking for blanket approval for all future projects, even if we don't know the detail. That isn't fair. City like Hillsborough, Portola Valley, and Assaton probably won't have home key projects. The burden will fall on smaller city like Millbrae. We need to stand up and demand our voices be heard. Decision about our city should be made by us, its residents, not by county, not by nonprofits, and not by activists. We ask that our city be excluded from the measure should the county decided to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Um, City Clerk, uh, would you please call the online speaker?
Certainly, Mayor. Um, online speaker, we have Karen iPhone, if you could state your name for the record, please.
Karen Lobo. Um, again, I would like you to pursue the resolution. The Board of Supervisors have proven that they can't be trusted. Giving Mike Caligie carte blanche approval for projects is a dangerous uh power grab on his part, and Millbrae needs to be able to make the decisions for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Alex Khan.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I sort of agree for what the pass a few speakers, and uh I thought it's for our city, it's really important to protect us first because the county cannot trust. They're not working for the residents as San Mateo County's voice, but they're working for their own personal agenda. That's really dangerous. And the second, it would save our city a lot of money promote the measure because everyone know what is going on in our city already. Millbrae is very special. We have a lot of land that's a bit on to the city because neither the agriculture and the bus station in San Mateo County own a lot of things than in us. So if they're using those to overwhelm our local city, they can build what they want. That would be very dangerous. I just thinking something, I'm sweating. Millbrae only have twenty-three thousand population. If they, they try to, you know, uh, put a lot of like, for example, currently would they have some other harmless person in our Millbrae? We're not saying like lot Millbrae cannot help people, but consider if three hundred people move into Millbrae, our population will be more than one percent as the people under and housing. That's really dangerous. We cannot offer to do that. We're too small city financially, we cannot offer. Our city have more than nineteen percent as age over sixty, including myself. So please, all those, I only trust those people now, and Gina and Anders. You guys have been fighting for our community for months. Thank you all. Please put that for November measure. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dan, um, Nick, uh, sorry.
Councilmembers, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. I'd like to remind council that they're actually independent of anything Millbrae does. There are two dueling ballot measures about Article thirty-four that will likely appear on the November ballot. The first is Regional Measure Four, which is a BAFah bond measure that um your, your councilmember Gina Pappan voted in favor of, and that has a voter threshold of sixty-six and two-thirds percent, must pass that for Article thirty-four to be overridden. If Proposition Five slash ACA one passes and lowers that voting threshold, only fifty-five percent of residents in the nine regional counties have to vote for that to totally override all of those nine counties Article thirty-four vote. But the San Mateo County one at fifty percent is the lowest of all. All the BAFah polling by EMC Research shows that it does not pass a fifty-five percent threshold, but it does pass a fifty percent threshold, which is what the county's doing. So even if the BAFah RM four bond, which would cost every median new homeowner in San Mateo County between forty-two thousand and seventy-two thousand dollars total, even if that does not pass, the county's bond could pass at fif- the, sorry, the county's ballot measure overriding Article thirty-four could pass at fifty percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mayor, there are no additional speakers.
Okay, thank you. So that ends public comment on this item number five. Bring it back to the council. Any further comment? We have a motion and a second on the table to send out the resolution.
Move approval and sending out the resolution.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments?
Yes, I will be abstaining as I want to make sure this vote is that of the existing council. I think that's the best thing to do.
You're abstaining from this particular vote on item, on item number five?
Yeah, upon um resolution.
Right, this, this motion is about approving the resolution to be sent?
Right, and I was just making a comment.
Oh, okay, all right. I just want to clarify it.
Yeah.
Okay. Can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goodman abstained?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Feng?
Aye.
Item number five, pass by a vote of three to um one with Vice Mayor Goodman abstaining.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, does anybody want to do any council comment before I adjourn the special meeting and continue the regular meeting? Councilmember Anne Schneider?
Uh, just a huge thank you to the management of the Rollins apartment for National Night Out, and to Sheriff, um, thank you. Sorry, it happened on the same time. I quickly went through, but thank you to all of our deputies and to everybody who attended National Night Out, and you still have until seven thirty to make it to Central Park. Thanks, Chief.
Okay. Anyone else? Nobody? All right. I, I have just um one comment. I just want to thank all my colleagues of all twenty cities and all the mayors and all the proxies as well, and for those who supported uh me, uh, as uh I've been recently appointed and elected to serve on the Transportation Authority, representing all cities at large within San Mateo County. Um, it's, Transportation Authority is a very important regional body that um governs all the Measure A and Measure W um tax dollars uh to be spent on uh transportation related, uh, traffic-related type um improvements. Uh, so I look forward to working with the TA Board um and continue to make all the improvement needed within San Mateo County. So I just want to thank everyone who uh voted for me and also supported Millbrae in this effort. Thank you very much for that. So with that, um, I will adjourn the special meeting and also continue the regular meeting uh to six o'clock on Wednesday, August seventh.